Meeting of the City Council Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, four thirty. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A subsection four oh three A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting I D eight seven eight five eight four two six eight four seven and password six one nine zero one four or via computer at the link on the website. Members of the public may also submit comments by using the form on the city's website under email, City Department, City Council. The disclaimer is that this is a work session of the Sanford City Council and not a business meeting of the City Council. The meeting is open to the public but is not a public hearing. The chairperson shall conduct the work session with the committee members and may elect to call upon the public in attendance for either questions or to obtain input and information. All work products will be developed by consensus and forwarded as advisory to the full council for any matter warranting legislative action by the City Council at a business meeting so posted and assembled. We will go right into twenty-one dash three one dash zero one, a budget workshop. And I want to thank you, Steve, for that excellent memo because it really helped bring me up to date. And I don't know if anybody else found it extremely helpful, but I think that the best way in my, and I'm open to suggestions, would be to just start to go through this beginning with the council goal that a lot of this is predicated upon. And, but I would like to ask questions as we go along, if that's okay, Steve?
Yes, so I apologize. I don't have the ability to share right now and I can't figure out why.
You know what? Don't worry about that. Because, well, I, I mean, let's, I, I could, I'm trying to think, could, is Larissa on?
She is.
Yes.
What do you think? You want to just?
The, uh...
Does, does everybody have the memo in front of them?
Yeah, I'll just pull it up.
I mean, I don't want to have the public be able to see it too, but. Steve, I have the ability to share.
If you want to, uh, if you want to take just a minute to start discussing this, I'm going to go and change my settings.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone have any, um...
Overall thoughts?
Well, I guess, I just want to make sure that, um, just, I just want to set the parameters. First of all, I'd like to give us at the end of the meeting at least ten minutes to recover and get to the next meeting. So I'd like to keep an eye on the clock. Um, and I also would really like, um, I want to move through the whole memo because I think it's all important stuff. So, um, but if you have questions as we go along, I think that is totally appropriate. I don't want to wait till the end and let Steve go off of this. I really want this to be a conversation. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. We ready, Steve, or not?
No, I'm not, I'm not finding my issue here yet. It still is not allowing me to share.
Ronnie, would you like to try to share?
Take your pardon.
Steve, Steve, this is Ronnie. I have the ability to put your memo up if you want me to because it says I can screen share.
Yeah, well, so am I supposed to be able to, um...
Let somebody else, there we go. That you wanted? There it is. Um, no, wait a minute. Is that the one?
Nope, no, that's not the one.
No, that's not it.
The one in the packet.
You want the one out of the packet? No.
Nope. Here, uh, here, Ronnie, I'm going to send you the file if you want to put that up for us here in just a moment.
Okay.
Apologize to everyone. This is the first time I've had this issue before, so.
Anybody that's watched these meetings knows that you are really great at this, Steve, so not going to hold it against you.
We changed one setting this afternoon. Apparently changed something else as well, so.
So while we're, while we're waiting, I mean, I, I would like to, um, uh, just put my oar in the water around the word sustainable. Uh, I know this was Mayor Cody's mantra, um, but, um, I also think that it was part of my mantra way back when we were looking at the, um, the Charter Commission, that when we were building a budget, we were talking about sustainability. And, uh, first of all, I think we've done a good job at that. Um, and I, I just don't want to lose that perspective. I want to put a little bit more emphasis on it that, uh, what we do with the budget, we, we need to consider that the, uh, the programs that we're funding, uh, the allotments, uh, are sustainable. Uh, if there's growth that we can sustain that growth, uh, and, uh, and et cetera. So I, I think sustainability is actually, um, a, a pretty big word when it comes to managing the, the overall budget. And I say that, um, because I used to work in education and, um, many times it, well, I think it's far more difficult to sustain an education budget, particularly in Sanford or where I was in, uh, Massabesic, uh, because we are so heavily dependent on, uh, state funding. So you would have good years and bad years. And, uh, you know, the, the bad years, you couldn't sustain the budget. There were layoffs, there were program cuts, there were this, there were that. And I was talking about my experience in Massabesic, which is typical. I'm not being negative, uh, about, uh, about Massabesic or funding. Of course, in city budgeting, we're going to have good years and we're going to have bad years. But I, I don't, I think we need to just consider, the phrase that comes to my mind as I'm talking here is throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Uh, you know, that we, we, uh, what we're doing is not sustainable so that eventually we're going to get to the point where we're going to have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, um, again, I'm, uh, I'm sort of killing time here waiting for, for us to get everything going. But I, I just want to put the emphasis on sustainability and make sure we continue that focus.
Hey, thanks, Bob. Um, are we ready, Steve?
I believe he logged out and logged back in, so I don't think he has sound yet. Bear with a second.
But I think the memo is up. Am I correct?
Yep, and I can, uh, I, it was clear that sustainability is at the top of, uh, up at, uh, top of the city manager's list, Bob, so.
Yes, and, and, you know, I'm looking, I, I have the memo on my, on my computer and, uh, just as I was, uh, looking at it was like, well, you know, again, let's, let's make sure, I, I think it's an, I think it's an important, it's an important concept, but it's not like we need to fund, continue to fund the fire department. We can need to continue to fund public safety. We need to continue to improve our roads. All those things have to be done in a sustainable fashion. You, you see, you see what I mean? And, uh, so I, I just think it's kind of outside some of the other things we might be discussing today.
Okay. Anybody else have any preliminary comments before we get started? I don't hear anybody jumping in.
No, I just wanted to echo the sustainability. I think that's really important to make sure that, you know, whatever we're, we're doing is sustainable in the long term.
And can I mention, um, I, the sustainability part, but also the, the fact that, um, a lot of others are, are kind of struggling this year and, and we still have a little bit ways to get out. So growth on the city's part, I would just kind of worry either from the school end or the, the city end. Um, I don't know if it'd be fair to, to everything that's going on. If the only thing that's growing is government right now.
And you're, you're correct, Luke. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, uh, certainly espousing, um, uh, well, to, to just be frank, uh, an increase in the, in the tax rate to preserve council goals. I just think that's part of, that's part of sustainability. We, we need to be able to go through the downtimes without massive changes in our programs or our goals. So in other words, we just shouldn't adapt something that, uh, doesn't look like we're going to be able to continue to fund into the future. It's, it's, so if it needs to be, the overall goals need to be slight increases over time, not big leaps, uh, of faith that can sometimes fall short during, during bad times. It's really more, it's a goal. You know what I'm saying? It's not something that's, uh, that's specific. Um, you know, I think if we say that, uh, that, uh, public safety is a goal, then, you know, we need to make sure that that goal is sustainable. And that, that means we need to continue to dedicate, uh, funds to, to that, uh, and, um, not have a good year where we maybe add several firemen and then have a bad year where the, we have to lay off several firemen or several teachers or, or whatever that might be. Um, so that's all I'm saying, you know?
Right, and tonight we're really, I, I really don't want us to get down into a tax rate or mill rate discussion. And I appreciate that that's probably, you know, tonight it's really, I'd like to just hear what everybody's, as Steve goes through this document, um, their ideas about what's up there and how, where it fits in with their priorities.
Yep.
I mean, the Budget Committee, there's people from the Budget Committee that are listening, and this is going to be one of those, um, budgets that I hope in, that we have a lot of, of discussion between, um, the interested parties. It's not just, even though in the end it's our decision and we voted in and then, uh, we, we see what happens with it, but it, I want the, the budget discussion to happen among everyone. So let's go, Steve, um, are you on?
I am. And I, I jumped out, I came back in and things seemed to be fixed. It just didn't, didn't link up right, so.
Okay, then why don't you go ahead with your, um, the beginning part of your memo?
Okay, uh, Ronnie, if you didn't notice, I've taken control away. I've got the document.
That's fine, Steve.
Okay. Um, all right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this as, as quickly as possible. So, pertaining to the sustainability, the, over the last number of years, the budget committees have worked extensively to try and define what that is. And then over the last, um, approximately three years, starting, well, two thousand nineteen, twenty, now the twenty-one cycle, but starting in nineteen, when the council did the majority of all of this work as far as sustainability, the, the multi-year, we put a twenty-year analysis out when we were looking at the city's ability to bond, uh, for the roads, for the additional school construction, uh, allocations towards the capital improvements program for various elements and such. That's where all of this work comes from. So we were trying to define what is sustainability. So these, I see these as targets, and these are targets that I, I think stand the test of time and are good targets for us to work, work towards and around. Uh, so on expense, we had defined that as four percent per annum. Over the last thirteen years or twelve cycles, the year-over-year increase was three point seven two percent. Revenue, the same thing, four percent growth in revenue. Uh, of course, if revenue was equal to expense, we wouldn't have any taxation at all. But since it, revenue is much smaller than, than expense, that even though the four percent per annum growth, it should keep you in relatively, uh, the same net taxation position. Uh, so the thirteen year look on that, the year-over-year has only been three point one one, but over the last five-year cycle has been three point six two. And over the last three years, we've seen that escalating upwards. Valuation, uh, year-over-year has been four point seven three percent per annum. Uh, over the last five fiscal cycles, it's been five point five five percent. Uh, one needs to be very cognizant there as to how much of that is new growth, you know, new taxation, uh, new valuation coming in online for the first time in that particular year versus changing in the pre-existing valuation base. Uh, what we're seeing currently is, uh, the relationship between the single-family residential home, the, the value of those on a, a state market analysis basis is increasing rapidly in comparison to commercial and industrial. So what that means is that the shift of burden on property taxation gets more, more burden gets put on the single-family residential versus the and all other categories. We need to be mindful of that. We work diligently during the budgeting process. We, we, uh, look at a multi-tiered analysis of a single-family residential home in Sanford that has a homestead exemption, if this and if that, what will, what will, what will the net taxation be, the changes year-over-year for those particular properties as they relate to the and all other categories of valuation. So that's where all of those numbers have, have come from.
Steve, can I just ask if anybody has any questions about this section?
Uh...
Or comments?
Are we moving, are we moving on from sustainability, Steve?
I, I think, I think this all relates to Council of Sac Paul.
Okay, so just try to take my, make myself a little clearer very briefly. Um, is, is, you know, the tortoise and the hare. We need to be more like the tortoise than the hare. Slow and steady growth, uh, that is, that the, we can sustain, uh, with the tax rate that we have. And I think that's exactly what City Manager Buck is showing us, so.
But Steve, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
For, so the markets that we're seeing now, where homes are selling for so much more than they would have even a year ago?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of an impact then is this going to, I mean, and that's valuation, I get that, but in real money or, like, what do you see happening?
So what, uh, so the conversations that I've already had with our assessing team, George Green being our lead assessor, um, is that George works diligently to ensure that we've, we certify, certify, our, our certification for valuation goes to the state. Uh, over the last probably four years, we've only certified the valuation as far as, uh, our certification goes at ninety-two percent. What that does, that allows us to capture one hundred percent of the state, the state property tax relief elements of homestead exemption, veterans exemptions and such under that. Uh, by doing so, by capping that at ninety-two percent, you know, you would have seen an eight percent increase each of the last two years, if not three years, on the value of residential properties from an assessment standpoint. And they would, they would be taking on a larger and larger and larger portion of the overall, uh, taxation as it relates to commercial and industrial properties. That, that have not, that have been raising much slower. So we, we're lining ourselves back up from, uh, early, earlier, well, around two thousand, we had a, a tax, a property taxation revolt, so to speak. And then again, uh, somewhere two thousand five, two thousand six, there was the, the second taxation revolt. Uh, and, and in both of those times, it revolved around the set of circumstances that we're getting into now. Property values on residential structures were raising rap, or were rising rapidly in comparison to all other categories. That's where homestead exemption, uh, came from in the first place. Uh, that's, that's why we currently have a program still in place today, is to address those factors. So what, long story short, what I'm saying to you is, I'm going to work with the assessor, uh, to certify at that ninety-two percent level, again, to not put another eight percent transference of, of, uh, valuation over onto the single-family residential. What George is afraid of, at some point, the market starts to go the other way. And it could go the other way as, as rapidly as, as it's gone up. And those swings cause a, a lot of, um, lot of confusion in the valuation base and a lot of rapid swings and change in who's paying what. We try to stabilize that over time, uh, by trying to flatten that curve.
Thank you, Steve.
May I, I'm sorry.
Council Hanselman, go right ahead.
Just to clarify that, um, so I make sure I understand, Steve, are you saying that with that ninety-two percent certification, in another way to say it, if, if my house is valued at three hundred thousand, am I, am I only paying property tax on ninety-two percent of that three hundred thousand? I'm sorry.
No, no, you, you, the, the number that you'll see on your, uh, tax card and your valuation will be the ninety-two percent.
Okay.
So you wouldn't pay not, you wouldn't pay on ninety-two percent of the three hundred thousand. The three hundred thousand is the ninety-two percent.
Okay, so it's reflected at ninety-two percent of kind of that value. So, um, just to answer, Anne Marie, your question, I think your question is if, uh, we have an increase in value of properties but don't change our net-to-taxation or mill rate, what the impact would be? And so, and Steve could, would double-check these numbers, but that's a big question for me. And if we're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar home with a twenty-five thousand dollar, um, you know, homestead exemption, essentially at the same exact mill rate year-over-year, there's about a hundred and fifty-two dollar increase to my property tax, roughly.
So each, so each cycle, when we're running that analysis, uh, the analysis that I perform for the Budget Committee and, and the City Council is, I take the entire assessed database and we, we sift that out and we look at the changes in valuation by categories, you know, certain types of homes, certain levels of valuation. So we, we, we slot that into, you know, zero to fifty thousand dollars, fifty to a hundred, hundred to, you know, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty, and I, and I have like nine categories that we look at in there. Then I average the, the change for all of the, the homesteads that fall into those various ranges of values. Um, and, and then I apply that change in valuation. So you're picking that factor up. We apply the change in the, uh, net taxation to them. And we apply any changes that, that may or may not have happened to the homestead exemption and the rate of reimbursement itself. So we're combining, combining those three factors. So we're not only looking at what changed in the net taxation and the impact it would have on those properties, but we look at the change in valuation as well. So when I, when I first started working here, we had a, an assessed, um, assessed valuation base where sixty-eight percent of the property tax burden was paid by single-family residential. We've gotten that down closer to sixty percent now. So we've had a, a huge swing in that. And that has been the result of more commercial and industrial development. Uh, but that's going to start to be eroded as the, as the home valuations are rising much more rapidly in relationship to those others. It's going to start to swing back to a higher percentage again.
Okay. Any other questions about this? Thanks, Steve, because I, I think that those things are so, it's like there's so many things that go into it. And that's why to just talk about what the mill rate would be is just not helpful.
And thank you for that recognition. The mill rate is an elusive number. You have to look at all of those factors to see what the true impact is going to be on, on anybody that's here in the community within their home.
Anybody else? Can we go to the next section? Let's go on, Steve. Thanks.
So these, these goals and objectives came out of the last planning session with the City Council. I, I find all of them extremely valid, uh, extremely, you know, valid and, uh, valid and, uh, yeah. They've stood the test of time since we weren't able to do one with COVID this, this past year. So one of the chief priorities was cost-effective delivery of service, services, uh, prioritize the services, the council direct priorities of services to increase or decrease. Administration will then adjust within the, the budget. One of those primary statements in, in there was to have efficiencies. Uh, so the council to review how city delivers its services, uh, such as direct service provision versus contract services. Uh, we have, for example, two large-scale, uh, snow plowing contracts now that allows us to cost-effectively ramp up the manpower and equipment, uh, that the city doesn't currently have. Uh, and we, we've used that to right-size the Public Works Department as much as possible. Uh, there's still some work to be done there. We still would like to have some additional staff on board that we haven't been able to fulfill. But it allows us to right-size the, uh, Public Works Department so that they focus on that work that's most difficult for us to contract out. So they do the smaller jobs, hit or miss, it's here, there, that it would be very expensive to pay for mobilization of, of larger companies and such under that. And not, not different than this year with the, the seven point, uh, five million dollars worth of construction work that was out there that was predominantly done by large-scale, um, contractors. Because that's, they, they were doing what they do best, the larger projects. Hydro-snow removal is contracted, uh, in much, as I said, much of the renovation and paving is, is subbed out. We look at economies of scale. Uh, city has several areas that they're working in, in this. We have a regional dispatch. We, we dispatch for fourteen agencies in all of York County, including performing their warrants. Now, whether dispatch center does warrants here in the state. Uh, we have shared assessing services that continue with Old Orchard Beach. Uh, we formerly had a service where, where one of our staff people went out part-time to Alfred. We had to stop that because of the workload that had increased within our own community. We have the Southern Main Tactical Response Team that's comprised from seven different, uh, police departments here in our area, but we're the lead entity on that. We have automatic fire mutual aid that reduces, um, workforce needs for, uh, not just large-scale responses, but for all responses. Um, no different, we're covering, we're, one of the departments is covering for Alfred right now. They have, they've had a large COVID hit over there. Their entire department is down right now. Uh, grounds of facilities, we continue to work with the school department. Uh, Brian DeRoche, that has the expertise, uh, we, we're, we're doing more and more for the schools. Uh, we find that to be a very symbiotic relationship whereby they're buying some equipment, we're contributing to man-hours, rather than us trying to replicate that as far as having, uh, trucks and trailers and hauling equipment, gaining good efficiencies there. Recreational programming, doing things.
New...
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Other question. Um, does that get rolled into the school budget as far as, um, those costs? How does that sort of get split out between city costs and like a school budget as far as those shared services?
Yep, that, that's, that's why I continue to pound the drum to have the school and the City Council and the school board being the budget committee so you can talk about these things. So for this last, uh, fiscal cycle, uh, there was a contribution of equipment by the school department. They purchased the equipment and we provided the, the, um, labor to, to run that equipment. It's become so increasingly hard to get summertime help, to get part-time help to come in. But if you're not, you're not creating the economies of scale that you can employ these people year-round with a benefit package, it's almost impossible to find competent people to drive and operate this equipment in the summertime. We, we work towards that. By combining our combined needs, we can, we can employ them year-round. You're going to see that when we come to the maintenance agreement for the solar facilities, uh, at the airport and, and off-site. It will allow us to, I believe, hire up two more people and employ them year-round and shift them from, uh, mowing around the panels to then doing maintenance work at the airport, to then doing snow, snow plowing, uh, such as sidewalks in the wintertime. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Steve, can I just ask a question about this particular cost-effective delivery of services? I would assume that these goals were done pre-COVID.
They were.
Um, have you noticed, um, even, now, I know that there was online services that were done when their city hall wasn't open, but have you noticed that even now that city hall is open, that you have an increased demand for online, people are using the online, um, services more than they were in the past?
Well, so, uh, since we started, since we reopened to the public and we've had a door monitor out, outside, we've, we've, uh, captured the daily flow to all of the departments. And I've been, I don't have that opened up here right now, but I've been graphing that for the departments, uh, throughout this entire, entire time period to try and understand that. So where I didn't have that data set before, I don't know if I can really comment other than asking the clerks, do they, do they feel that more people are taking advantage of the online because they had to initially? And, and so I'm, I'm not sure if that's continuing yet. We're still seeing daily flow of, um, uh, ninety to a hundred people just in the clerk's, clerk's office. Uh, before, when we were trying to clean up the backlog and then, you know, voting, voter registration committee and stuff, uh, it was, it was crazy. But it's, it's simmered down now to a, a more comfortable flow.
I'm glad that you're looking at that data. I think that for some, for some of us, and that includes me, there were things that I never thought I could do online that I just went ahead and did. And it was not as, it was easy. So I think that that, if nothing else, it forced some people to, um, try new things. So anybody else have any other questions about this?
Maybe, come, come, oh, sorry, Mayor, um, on, on your comment about the online services, have we, um, had any luck with the code department getting more online, uh, usage through there? Do you know, Steve? Because I know that we...
Still working on, yeah, they're still working on the Municity program. Uh, you'll see in the planning department, there's an increased ask for the G I S system, uh, this year is to implement, uh, continued phasing in of all of the updates to the comp plan as, as well as the, uh, land use tables that will ultimately will link our Municity product to our G I S product. So if you're a new development, you can, you can go online, you can click the property that you want to develop on and you can tell it what it is that you want to build there. And it will then give you the feedback as far as the forms and, and elements that you'll need to satisfy to do that project on that parcel of land. We're getting, we're getting... We're get- we're getting, we're getting closer. It, it has not been without pains building up that Municity system that links our E-code, our GIS system, uh, our codes, and then all of our permitting functions. So they've been developing, uh, form by form by form and, and loading into the Municity system and getting that to work.
But I, I do think, I do think, uh, we're on the right path, but I do think this is, this is the future. This is just going to take, uh, you know, COVID, uh, situation might be, uh, giving us a jumpstart. But we're, we're going to need to continue to focus on this. I, I think this is a real, a real important thing. We're all learning that, um, at least for me, about the only thing I need to do in Sanford is go to the grocery store. Uh, I can do everything else online.
Actually, you don't have to do that, Bob. They come in, they deliver groceries to your house too.
Do they?
Yeah, we order ours online now. It's easier.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have an offline conversation on that. I didn't think anybody delivered in Sanford, but, uh, uh, my, you know, uh, my kids who live in other states, so this is not a main thing. I mean, uh, my daughter gets her groceries delivered in two and a half hours. You know, she goes online and does it and gets it, gets it delivered. But anyways, the, it's the future. I, I think once people, uh, understand that, uh, they don't, they don't need to get in a car, drive down to city hall to, uh, pay their excise tax on their car, re-register their car, they can do it real simply right at home with a couple of clicks and, uh, put their credit card information in, then, then, uh, expand from there, you know? So, uh, anyways, keep it up, Steve. Good job.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, on the capital program, uh, there were several, several elements that came out of that long-term analysis that was ultimately submitted to a referendum vote in November of two thousand and nineteen. And that was the six-point-two-million-dollar bond for roads. Uh, the council prior to that had, had said, said to city administration, said to me point-blank, fix the roads first. Darn it. Special emphasis there. Fix the roads. So that, that analysis brought forward, uh, it looked at three major scenarios, but the six-point-two-million-dollar bond, um, prevailed all day long with a ramp up of a half million dollars per year, ultimately in the capital improvement program beyond the six-point-two-million-dollar bond, uh, to get us to four million dollars worth of funding per year. So the seventeen-year analysis that was put out there averaged like three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand and change. So it, it, it hit that, uh, excuse me, three-hundred and, yeah, three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, yes. Just under the four-million-dollar mark. So we, we hit the mark there. What that voted bond, bond indebtedness does, it adds seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars to this year's, um, debt service. So that was a short-term bond. Uh, it adds seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars this year. Um, it increased the mill rate effort pursuant to that voted approval. And in, as long as the council keeps that ramp up over that seventeen-year period, it averaged, it went goes from point-nine mils that the city was putting towards its roadway efforts to one-point-six mils per year toward this roadway effort. So that was the, the, uh, impetus behind that vote was, are you willing to vote to raise your taxes, to put an increased effort towards your road system in order to get that work done? And by my view, the voters overwhelmingly said yes to that. The fire station was part of that referendum. It was for a non-disclosed, uh, parcel of land because we had several in mind at that point in time. Obviously, there was not enough information. The community did, did not support that, so that was dropped out of the analysis. And it's out of the future analysis that I've rebuilt on this. Schools, there was a nine-point-nine-million-dollar bond that was part of the November referendum of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, that's to finish off the construction and rehabilitation of the and-all-other classrooms, the elementary and middle school projects, uh, to go, to go and coincide with the state's, uh, forty-three-million dollars. That adds six-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to this year's debt service. Uh, that was a long-term bond. That was a twenty-year bond opposed to the short, I think it was a ten-year bond on the road projects. And the last piece of that, the analysis, it was a huge piece. This is an error. It says a hundred and fifty thousand here. It's actually three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I corrected this in a later version, but, um, so the council had, had agreed that pursuant to the master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department, that was actually developed in two thousand and sixteen, that it was time to start investing in bringing the Parks and Recreation facilities back up to their, uh, former, uh, state as well as making improvements. Uh, because overwhelmingly, when that master plan was put out there, the public support for that was overwhelming. So there's a five-year effort of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year. Uh, this would be year two of that implementation. And then after that, it would be a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year effort, uh, in order to maintain those assets. So those are three major pieces that, uh, were, were part of that referendum vote. Is there any questions on that before I move on to tax burden?
I have a quick Go ahead.
Council Hanselman, you can go first, and then who was after you? Was that Council Lanigan?
Martel.
Oh, Council Martel, okay. Council Hanselman, go ahead.
And Steve, I could probably find this in the last financial report, but do you or Ronnie happen to know, kind of at the top of your head, how much of the current year CIP we expect to expend for Parks and Rec? I know there's been shifts in some of the projects, you know, because of COVID, and, and it seems like we're, I'm just wondering if we're going to fully expend, um, the current year budgeted CIP or if we'll be behind in that for the parks?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Ronnie look that up while, while, uh, but while she's doing that, um, I can't think of anything that's been delayed in that, that parks programming. Uh, Brian has, has kept us on track on that. Um, work up in, at the, at the swim area, as well as the, the work over in Carpenter Park, all of that, uh, is on schedule. They're going to wrap up the last of that this spring. Uh, he's got some other bids out there and he's got lease, leases, uh, lease purchases on, on equipment. So, uh, I can't say enough for, for Brian's work. After Alan Grady, uh, left our system, Brian has carried, carried the torch.
Great, thank you.
Council Martel, go ahead.
Um, yes, I just wanted to have a clarifying question around the roads again. Um, so it says, uh, current point-nine mil to average one-point-six. Is the point-nine the, the current average cost per year to maintain the roads in their current condition?
That, that was the mill rate effort that was going in pursuant to the, um, one-half of the city charter mandated capital improvements program. Uh, that, that's only the hard input cost that comes out of capital improvements. That, that's not counting the, uh, public works budget or, or anything of that nature. Uh, so that was the prior mill rate effort prior to initiating the six-point-two-million-dollar bond and the four, the ramp up four million per year in the CIP.
Okay, so I guess maybe just to clarify my question. Um, so to maintain the roads to some level of DOT standard, what, do we have an estimate on what that usually roughly is?
You do. You have an engineered, we have an engineered, uh, portfolio on that that came in and they did a pavement condition index, uh, rating. And then they, uh, what we call pre-engineered every, uh, linear foot of road base in the city of Sanford. And Director Hill has been working off in that analysis, uh, since we had that implemented around two thousand and sixteen. It was, it was very apparent. Um, yeah, so let, let me just pause there. Uh, um, Council Martel, I do, we do have those numbers. Uh, the four million dollars per year gets us very close to that, that number.
Okay, so you're saying that four mil per year is roughly what we should expect to have to put into the roads to keep them reasonably well-maintained? Is that
Yeah, that came, that came, that came from that engineered analysis. That's, that's why we set that as a target. And then, you know, the formerly, the budget committee in the year that we were trying to decide how we get there, uh, it was multiple bonds. It was take the CIP to four million all at once. Um, the blend, the six-point-two-million-dollar bond, and then ramp up to the four million, uh, best match for community's ability to pay. That's why we do that twenty-year analysis. We, we're looking at the projections in there. That's where those targets came from on expense growth, on revenue growth, on valuation growth. Uh, and we propagate those across the twenty-year span. And then we plug back in increases or decreases to debt, to debt service and, and other budget elements as are known today. Of course, that analysis is only as good as the assumptions that are going into that, but nonetheless, it gives you at least a mechanism to measure that going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's, you know, there's a little bit of a perception at least, um, that, you know, roads are kind of an afterthought and that's why we always have a bond issue for that sort of thing. But, um, it looks like there's been some work there, so that's good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
But actually, I just think that, wasn't this the first time we'd ever done a bond for the roads in the way that this was done, Steve?
I don't know your history as
I know, I mean, I'm talking since two thousand and two.
I would ask Ronnie. She has a little bit more history.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have unstable internet connection here. Can you repeat the question again?
I was just wondering, Ronnie, I don't remember us ever bonding for roads, other than when we did the parking lots at the schools one year because we needed to bring everything up, so we bonded that piece, I think. But I don't ever remember us doing exactly what we did here, using the CIP, combining the CIP with bonding. We needed to do that so we could get to a certain point.
Correct. This is the first time we ever did the combine, combined bonding and CIP.
I, I would argue, and this is just a quick comment, that town meeting used to cut capital improvements quite a bit in order to bring the tax rate down. Um, and so one of the main reasons, and I know this is a long time ago, but one of the main reasons we got so far behind to begin with was the consistent cutting as opposed to, um, kind of maintaining a level over time, so.
And can I just add that I really think that you guys did a lot of work this summer because this particular year, because I have been, Lebanon Street is good and Main Street's good. I mean, I, it's not that it's perfect, but it's so much better. And I just, I just really appreciate not having to worry about my car getting, you know, in a ditch or something when I'm driving down the road. So I just want to give a shout out to the, all the work that I, I have seen done on my street and all over the city.
So the goal in the engineered analysis is to take it from a current, uh, pavement condition index averaging across your road base of something just under seventy PCI and getting that to eighty-five percent or higher. That's where this program was designed to, once you get above eighty, eighty-five percent and higher, your maintenance costs go down dramatically. You can then shift those resources out of maintenance and get that back into capital. Uh, and once you climb above ninety percent, you're in incredible shape.
Let's hope we get there.
That's the analysis.
All right, let's go on, Steve.
All right. Uh, next is, is tax burden. Uh, so, uh, the major line item here was expansion diversification of the taxable base to address the disproportionate tax burden on single-family homes. Uh, the council over the last number of years has really put a strong emphasis on this. Uh, in fact, this, this started multiple budget committees ago, that, that was the evolution of looking at the land bank, uh, because the realization was there that, um, a third of Sanford's, uh, residents live in, uh, various forms of rental housing and that overall combined valuation was only eleven percent of the city's taxable base. So a third of the population lived in eleven percent of the taxable base. The other point of realization was that at that point in time, it was, it was sixty-eight percent plus of the tax burden. The taxable base was combined of single-family residential homes only. So I know my first year here, there was a large expansion on, on the budget, on net taxation. And I was just dumbfounded. The, the homeowners that were coming in one right after the other, hey, they said it was going to be ten percent, but my increase is eighteen percent. That's where the analysis showed that, that they were paying a larger portion of the tax bill than any other single, single category. So this is why economic development is so important to the city, and it's why we've worked so hard on that. Uh, because it's, it's about expanding those all other categories, the commercial and the industrial bases by making improvements to the roads, uh, the downtown that's pending now, um, and the permitted industrial space, utilities such as Sanford Net Fiber to attract, you know, to have business retention, attraction, um, and growth. Municity solar is so important. The amount of taxation that's going to, going to spin off from the solar project for the first time this year, the first fifty megawatts, and there, there's almost that much again in various stages of permitting. In fact, I saw, um, that MBA or NBA, uh, they filed for this, their state permits. Uh, today we get that communication as well. These, these are entities that are bringing in a high value on a per-acre basis and they need no services. They're contributing to the green economy and the green energy, uh, contributions. Uh, I have in the manager's report, the governor announced, uh, new initiatives there for power purchase agreements. We have exceptional water and sewer capacities, and the city is defining itself as being a, a great public-private partnership developer. Uh, one of those is with the main department of transportation. We've initiated all of their programs. Matt Hill, the public works director, has done several MPI's, uh, municipal partnership initiatives, uh, for Mount Hope and Cottage and Route one-oh-nine. Uh, those are all pending. Uh, we've had the public-private partnership, the PPP, uh, which, uh, combines, uh, public as, as municipal, private business and, uh, MDOT, all coming together on traffic improvements. Uh, and we have the PPI as well that's, uh, done all of the engineering work on the downtown improvements. Uh, that's gone out to second phase for final engineering now, and that has allowed us to get into the main department of transportation's work plan for, uh, all but full funding of those road improvements. So that's going to save the city about seven million dollars out of its own portfolio for road improvements that the state will fund because of that working relationship. Uh, the use of tax increment financing in the areas of, of the downtown, housing, airport, solar, development, uh, medical facilities and others. Uh, this preserves the city's capture of the essential programs and services under the school funding, reduces our county tax, and it also preserves our state revenue sharing. Uh, by, by sheltering these large, so for example, the solar project is about a ninety-three-million-dollar valuation on that. Uh, if that came online unsheltered, without the use of tax increment financing, uh, the city would, would have lost pursuant to the engineered analysis that was done by a bond council at Bernstein Shore, we would have lost fifty cents of every new revenue dollar that came in from that through reductions in essential programs, uh, and services to schools, reductions in our revenue sharing, and increases proportionally in the county tax. That's why I continue to say a well-structured tax increment financing district can be mutually beneficial to both the developer and the city, if you're cognizant of how to, to, to develop that. And we also strive to get increases in commercial, industrial, and personal property tax base and have that to become a larger and larger portion of the city's overall tax base, where we've gone from sixty-seven percent down to sixty-two on single-family residential value. My fear is that's creeping back the other way now because of the rapid increase in the market for those residential properties.
Any questions about this from counselors? Thank you.
Can you
Go ahead with that.
That's Jonathan. Um, Steve, can you, can you scroll back down a little bit?
Is this the right direction?
Uh, other way. There was something, oh, uh, oh, back up, sorry. Can you explain the difference between the personal property tax base, oh, sorry, and, um, residential property tax base?
Yep, so I, I continue to, the, the strong point that I continue to, to make here is, when you look at, when you take the city's total ta- uh, tax base and you break it into categories, you know, commercial, industrial, personal property, um, you know, commercial rental properties, uh, and, and all the way down to single-family residential homes. Um, the, the lion's share, so right now sixty-two percent of that total valuation of the entire city, that value is, is comprised of single-family residential homes.
Okay.
If you, what, what you, what I would like to see is that that drops down as low as fifty percent and that more than fifty percent of the to- city's total value is in other categories of taxation, commercial, industrial, personal property, and the like. The difficulty with personal property, you still have three categories out there. You have personal property that has no exemptions on it. You have personal property that's better qualified, and you have personal property that's better qualified. So my frustration with the state of Maine, that, that we can, we as a municipality, as a political subdivision of the state, we can only tax pursuant to the, the tax, taxation authorities that the state grants to us as a political subdivision. The state has used taxation as, as a social engineering, uh, for a pro- for a business attraction and such under that, but there's been no comprehensive But there's been no comprehensive review of taxation here in this state for decades upon decades upon decades. So they will, they will give, give a new benefit when better turn to Betty on personal property. Uh, what that did was it changed the re, uh, reliance by the businesses for the state to reimburse them for business, uh, equipment reimbursement. It shifted that, that, uh, that risk to the municipalities. So under the current methodology, it started at a hundred percent valuation, it's currently down to fifty percent. So the state only reimburses us, if you have a million dollars worth of personal property that's Betty qualified, B-E-T-E, Betty qualified, uh, the state's going to pay us on five hundred thousand of that.
And Steve, let me just.
The business won't pay anything on that.
But Steve, they did that on purpose because they were trying to save money. So truthfully, I would just want you to know that that is in front of taxation this year because we did have an evaluation through the government oversight committee about veteran Betty as part of the tax, um, evaluation process of, of business incentives. So going forward, you know, that's a whole, that's so, that's so deep into what we, it is what it is and I agree with you, it's not fair, but it is what it is. So we're just going to have to, I, I will tell you, Jonathan, that is so complicated.
Sounds like a round head hole.
Oh my gosh, I can't even tell you and I've been looking at it for eight years, so.
Okay, so the personal property is like.
I am with Steve on this. He's right.
That's like somebody that has a, a forty-acre woodlot or something like that, right? Or is that?
It's, it's just, it is a way, it's exactly what Steve said, they give with one hand and take with the other. And in the end, somebody's happy, but it's not the taxpayers.
Just to clarify, I think what councillor Martell is asking though, uh, I may be wrong, but personal property is generally equipment. Uh, you know, for like commercial use, so it's, it's not real estate and so it's.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking sacred.
So it's equipment, um.
Okay, all right, thank you. No, that's helpful.
See, it was so much simpler, Steve.
It could be anything from, uh, a chair and a hair salon to, uh, um, um, twenty million dollar loom at, uh, Flemish Master Weavers.
Or solar panels.
Yeah, solar panels, yeah. So I, I have opinions about the state taxing stuff like that, but anyway, okay, moving on. Thank you.
All right, revenue, are we going to talk about res, not maximize non-property tax revenues?
Yeah, so, um.
Keep an eye on the clock, Steve, because I really want us to have an opportunity to at least bring it full circle before.
But the council is aware, we spend a tremendous amount of time in, in the realm of advocacy, uh, the York County Advocacy Group, the Mayor's Coalition, uh, the Legislative Policy Committee, all to look at impacts as the state, state legislators are working on legislation uh, to preserve those elements that are specifically there to offset property taxation. One of those primary mechanisms is the state municipal revenue sharing. This has been in place since nineteen seventy-three. Uh, yes, I actually remember when that wasn't in place, uh, and was cognizant of why it was put in place, but it's been in place since nineteen seventy-three. State law says it's supposed to be five percent of income corporate and sales tax, that first five percent that comes into the state coffers is distributed out via Rev one and Rev two to municipalities to, to address disproportionate tax rate effort. Rev two addresses that predominantly for service center communities such as Sanford. Uh, various administrations have futtled around with this, um, it's coming back now. Uh, kudos to the Mills administration that's currently at three point seven five percent. Under her LD one, uh, biennial budget that was submitted, she preserved that at three point seven five percent. And she's going to allow the state's economy, which is actually on the up, upswing, um, to come into that formulation and be shared as it's supposed to be. So for Sanford, our current fiscal year twenty-one, um, distribution, uh, had a hundred and twenty-seven million going into that at the state level. Our share of that with Rev one and two is two million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. The current reprojection of that, which hasn't come out at the state level yet, but they're saying that we're, is, that they're going to distribute a hundred and thirty-eight million. When I reverse engineer that, that's an additional hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in this fiscal year that could be coming to us. Ronnie and I have not seen the underperformance as was originally projected and reprojected back in August. I, I cried BS on that, not going to happen. And now they're saying it's going the other way to the positive. The governor's, uh, LD one says in the first biennial, uh, budget that the state expects to collect and distribute a hundred and forty-one million dollars under that formulation. Put that in perspective, that would be an additional two hundred and fifty-six thousand as compared to the current projections for us. Um, and I haven't picked that up in our budget book yet, but I will. And then for the second biennial, second year of the biennial, they expect to have a hundred and fifty-one million dollars distributed. That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars larger than our current distribution. So that's what the revenue sharing was supposed to be. Just imagine if that was up at five percent, but that's what it's supposed to be. As the state's economy does better, we get a portion of those broad-based taxes that are available only to the state that are not available to us as a municipality as far as property taxation is concerned.
Anybody have any questions about this?
We also seek to preserve, um, we, we certify at ninety-two percent. That gets a hundred percent of the homestead exemption at twenty-five thousand dollars per homestead home with a seventy percent uh, funded reimbursement. The governor has preserved that in her LD one as well as she has preserved all of the veterans exemptions, the tree growth exemptions, blind exemptions and, and others. So uh, strong recognition to the governor for preserving property tax relief as intended, uh, under those pieces of state legislation. Um, the, the state still seeks to, and the governor's done a better job with this, preserves to have, um, central programs and services funded at fifty-five percent overall at the state level. Uh, the state recognizes that currently going to be at fifty-two percent under the LD one budgets, but they, at least they recognize the deficiency former administrations would not. And the other big piece that we have to fight for every, every, every year is the preservation of the motor vehicle excise tax uh, to, to be collected at the municipal level and kept at the municipal level. So for us, that's four million dollars worth of revenue per year at current levels. We have to file to the state of Maine and show that we put that amount of, uh, effort into our road bases. Um, uh, no, excuse me, that's the next line, uh, the, the Europe. So under the, uh, urban rural improvement funds, those are federal highway dollars that come to the state and are distributed by a lane mile basis. The number of, of lane miles that you have within your compact zone to help the municipalities offset the cost of maintaining that road base. So for us, that's, uh, just under two hundred and fifty thousand, I think it's around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, at current levels, we have to file each year that we've expended at least that amount of funds and we have to prove where it is that we spent those funds uh, within our municipality. All right, so I'll keep moving quickly if, if there's no further questions. So I won't go through all of this, uh, roadway improvements. This is the summary of the analysis, uh, for the roadway bond. Uh, the six point two million dollars, uh, in addition to the one point five million dollars that was in capitals, we had seven point seven million dollars to expend this year. Director Hill has expended that. We're going to ramp contributions up from that one point five to two million dollars in this next fiscal cycle. Two and a half after that, three, three point five, and ultimately up to four. There, there's the analysis that was on that. Same anal, analytical work on the school construction. Uh, I've got all of the detail as to where, where that's slated to go and is going and how it produced the nine point nine million dollars uh, that was put out there for bond. Parks and Recreation, the analytical work on the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each of the next five years and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars thereafter. LED streetlights, uh, we didn't talk much about that. That streetlight conversion has been completed and the council just authorized a small expansion to that out of the traffic circle and a couple of other critical areas. Uh, what that does for us is it reduces our electrical cost by a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year pursuant to those. That will be used for approximately three point five years to pay off that investment. Then after that, you get the full reduction, um, on that. So you won't be paying that to debt service anymore. You'd be, it's a revenue bond essentially. Uh, you get that full savings each year. Even with this, we still, uh, uh, the streetlights are about forty-three thousand dollars less above the hundred and ten that's going in here to pay, pay the system off. So here's all of the, the closing points of the prior commitments that are, that were made. Uh, this was the twenty-year analysis. I updated this over the weekend. Um, the, the reason for updating this analysis is that, again, the analysis is only as good as the assumptions going into that. I was able to update two years' worth of additional data in this, so I've plugged that in. Uh, so this shows you the, sorry. Uh, the cur, the curve here, um, this is, is net, net taxation. Orange line is your, your growth and valuation. And the trend line is the average, uh, taxation over time. Uh, so it shows you that for fiscal year twenty-two, there was this anticipated, that we're budgeting right now. There was this anticipated increase in mill rate effort for those elements that were voted in. Uh, so over the next one, two, three and four years, after which it goes back to, you've recovered from that larger influx of debt service. You've built up to your four, four million dollars per year and your CIP towards roads and you start to reduce taxation again thereafter. Uh, that's all shown here as anticipated, uh, when you follow all of those assumptions as to what the, um, mill rate effort is expected to be over the next number of years. And so that, that was the linking the council's goals to the larger points that have been voted in by referendum. Um, and I'd open it up for, I turned it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sorry. Once again, I couldn't tell the difference between mute and muted. I'm on, right?
You are.
All right, so, um, what about your closing points? You had, um, all right, we talked about the road CIP, parks and rec funding, planning for debt service, labor costs, contracted services. Those were just things that they were, things for discussion. Does anyone have anything in particular that struck them that they want to discuss? Or that they think warrants further, um, ex, explanation? Even if it relates to how, so for example, I didn't really see, um, I know one of the things that we were talking about was the downtown and I really didn't see that in there, Steve. I mean, is that factored in?
So the downtown, you still have the, um, PPI, the, uh, Planning Partnership Initiative that's ongoing with MDOT, the council, um, authorized Matt to take from CIP the next, I think it was two hundred, two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was needed for the final engineering on that, uh, that keeps us within MDOT's work plan. Uh, and then that's slated for twenty twenty-four, I believe, the same year that the traffic light improvements are slated. Um, Matt Hill had, had conversations with, with Ernie, uh, about breaking that into, into two different projects over, uh, the span of uh, four years and we, and we balked at that and said, no, we, we want to come into the downtown, hit it one fell swoop and complete that in a single year. So we're back on track with that discussion with MDOT, so.
Yeah, I just wondered where we, you know, I, I just want, I haven't been part of the, the, um, the goals development over the past few years, so I would really be interested with the counselors that are, you know, been here for a while, how that explanation of what we just saw squares with what you thought the council's goals were.
Uh, personally, I think they're, they're pretty much right in line with, uh, with what, what we were looking for. I mean, I've, uh, I'm in my, what, fifth year here now and certainly there's some counselors that have been here longer than me. Uh, but I, I feel very comfortable with the information that's been, that's been laid out. Uh, and, um, you know, the concern always is, you know, we, we need to keep doing what we're doing that's right. Uh, we need, you know, and, and keep moving in a, in a positive direction. I, I don't see really any reason why we can't do that, but, uh, you know, we, we need to, again, figure, figure out what we're doing that's right and, uh, and keep doing that. And, uh, uh, I, I think it's great. It is great as a long-time, uh, resident in this community and, uh, uh, associated with the politics of this community to see this community invest in itself. Because I think for many, many, many decades, this community did not invest in itself. Uh, and, uh, and now we're moving in a positive direction, which is having positive results. Uh, just a real quick question, uh, Steve, maybe you can answer this. What's driving the increase in property values? Because I think that's part of what we're doing that's right here.
Lack of supply.
You think it's lack, lack of supply?
In Sanford Springdale, there are currently thirteen houses for sale. Uh, and then you have to go to new construction.
The, the point being though, why do people want to move to Springdale? Why, not, not that there's necessarily a housing, but is it, is it because we've, we've, uh, worked on our schools? Is it because we've worked on our roads? Uh, is it because, uh, we have these, uh, other projects going on, the solar project and the municipal network and those kinds of?
They can't afford the house.
That's kind of what I'm, uh, getting at.
I, I do see all your hands up. I'm going to just, if, if, Bob, if you're done, I'm just going to go. Councillor Hanselman, then Councillor Tuttle, and then Councillor Lanigan.
Hey, thank you. So this was super helpful, Steve, and I, I think great for some of the new folks in the budget committee. Um, and it's, it's completely in line with, you know, what we looked at, we went into bonding and what we committed to at that time. I think what's important to remember and for me personally is we did that pre-pandemic. And although, you know, I, I appreciate Steve, your comments at the last city council meeting, it's kind of the normal budget process and, and I'm relieved that, you know, state, um, funding is still looking really strong. You have to remember, there's a chasm that exists in our community and, and throughout the US and probably the world between the folks that have survived the pandemic really successfully and are, you know, have a greater net worth today than they did this time last year, have more cash in their bank accounts and the folks that, that don't and, and that are going, you know, um, talking with our folks at York County Community Action and, um, you know, the backpack program and other resources and, and expressing that they're on the edge of really scary financial times and they're not, you know, they're making hard choices between eating and, and putting oil in their tanks or they're not paying rent. And we have landlords that are in situations where they haven't received rent. So I just want to keep that big picture in mind. I, I am fully supportive of, um, you know, trying to continue the, the plan. Roads, we cannot, we just cannot, uh, you know, I think back off on our commitment, I think personally to the road improvement plan. Um, because I, you know, we, we did that really purposeful and, and, and those bonds can't go to waste. And for that to be the case, I think we have to, to really work on continuing to, to do that CIP funding for the roads. But man, I, I wonder how, you know, if, if everything stays the same, but our valuation goes up, I'm paying more, right? You know, and so when I, when I look at that, um, to me it says, how do we find a way to get that taxation to go down? You know, and, and, and not, uh, a pencil down, but, uh, bigger than that, you know, five hundred thousand dollars down. How, how do we make an impact so that citizens, our neighbors and community members are, are feeling like we're paying attention to what's going on? And, and we talk a lot about optics in Sanford. I, I think that showing taxpayers and our neighbors that we're paying attention, not just to you know, to everybody in our community that, that we need to really look at, you know, are there ways we can delay some of our plan or somehow, and maybe it's the revenue side, maybe it's, you know, things will come together really well. But that, that's where I'm at personally, is I would like to see that taxation go down, um, because I'm concerned about a faction of our community.
Thank you, councillor, um, councillor Tuttle.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I agree with councillor Stackpole and I think they were right on budget to where we were projecting. One of my big frustrations of having been a selectman many years ago is that, that with town meeting, we always seem to be taking money away from the infrastructure. And I noticed that the last few years we have corrected that. I think revenue is always the key. I would hope as our city manager says, that we reach a fifty percent, uh, perspective in the near future. I, I look at what we've done at the airport. A tremendous, with the airport manager that we had now, I wish we would have had it twenty years ago. But I think we are projecting, we are. But I think we are projecting, we are investing in our community, and I think it goes to credit, uh, uh, President, uh, City Manager and our former mayor, who I thought, Madam Mayor, did a wonderful job in this area.
Thank you, councillor Tuttle. Councillor Lanigan, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, one of the things that I, I think that was frustrating last year, and and I don't know if Deputy Mayor Hurley, he will agree with me, is that we did choose to spend some money on marketing. We did spend, you know, we, we do spend some money on things in the city, and we don't feel that we're getting the best bang for our buck. So I don't know if there's, and those types of things actually would create revenue that councillor Hanselman needs to offset. So those are the things that I feel like we're really stumbling on, is the things that we have put into place that aren't being implemented correctly, because it's not allowing us to continue forward because we're hoping those things generate extra revenues or extra interest in our community. And to councillor Stackpole's point, um, I, I find a lot of people are moving here because we're still affordable. And, but if we're not affordable tax-wise, we're gonna be pushing a lot of people out of our community, and we're gonna change our community entirely and not recognize it one day because, uh, people that have been here their whole lives and families and generations aren't gonna be able to afford to live here, so.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan, and I think we're gonna be having future discussions about the marketing issue, so. Just for another, that's for another day. Anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Steve, do you have any final comments, anything you'd like to just, um, have us all be aware of or think about?
Yeah, I know, I know this is likely easier for me to say than 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 you folks as elected officials, but there's, there's never an easy year to budget, there's never a good year, uh, to, um, spend more, you always need to to spend less. There's always some reason as to why you need to avoid and put it off for another year, make it through a single year. Uh, I'm just very proud of the work the city council and and administration has been able to do around sustainability. So I just wanna keep beating that drum around sustainability, not, not taking away from the capital program because over the last nine years of of working here, my, my biggest frustration has been catching up with the capital program, right? And and we're a long ways from getting there yet, but all the creative things that were done to to take out, you know, integrated equipment and replace that in a more, more cost-effective manner using, you know, the DRMO program, changing types and number, changing contracted services versus doing it in-house. It's been a lot of work to to relieve that. And, but the road, the road you can't. You either fix them or you don't, right? So the, the, that's where the council came a couple of years ago to see, we've just gotta fix the roads. We've gotta focus on that. We've got a great plan in place now, uh, I don't, I don't see that going by the wayside. Um, when I look at, I didn't put those numbers up here tonight, but in it, in one of the memos that I, I sent to the, the council, if you look at the preliminary budget numbers that Ronnie and I started working on today with the departments for the first time, it looks bleak, it looks absolutely horrible. But, uh, even after today's work, I, I see avenues to be able to change that, to get in alignment with, uh, the sustainability elements that were put out here. And and get, get that to a good point for the budget committee to pick it up and the council to work on thereafter.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody else have anything to add? Councillor Hurley, I see your hand up.
So Steve, on the idea of revenue, and I'm not talking about the standard revenue that goes up and down, the state revenue, the, uh, excise tax, et cetera. Some of the revenue we had planned for from some of our own projects, uh, whether it's personal property taxes or new property taxes we saw coming, um, some of those are not needing execution, am I correct? And how are we owning for that? Like, I'd say solar, maybe earnings from the broadband. Um, you know, how are we gonna adapt? Because those things had been factored in through our analysis for the bond.
Yep, the, the only thing that was underperforming was the timing on the solar. Um, by our earliest estimates, we're two years behind, and then by our revised estimate, we're a year behind as far as when that revenue would hit our books. So, uh, it's not on our books yet, the initial numbers that were put out there, the half a million dollars that that will be gleaned from the TIF district around the solar project. We've gotta bring that into the revenue, that has come into the revenue yet, that will take off, offline, the debt service for the SRE building. And I would propose to you from there, your marketing initiative will be met from that, uh, as well as a couple of other elements. I will be sitting with Aaron McMahon, our new treasurer, to glean through all of the TIF districts. I believe there's a higher revenue there that's available than what we're currently booking. Uh, for example, there was seventy thousand dollars of revenue that came in late, uh, after taxes were already set. It wasn't, wasn't anticipated, uh, because of the increased performance in, within the TIF district. So we're gonna do a better job of gleaming that and and I'll bring those forward. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna say at this point more that I feel that they are underperforming. I, I think by the time we get done with the fine tuning of the analysis, I think we're gonna be in a good spot with it.
Okay, if there's never, now, anything else, Steve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've also gotta anticipate, uh, the, um, summer comments, I don't have that built in yet as well. That's the new healthcare facility.
You're asking for some sort of a TIF district as well, Beth? I can't hear you more.
Beg your pardon?
They're asking for some sort of a TIF, uh, relief as well, aren't they?
They are, they are, but we haven't, we haven't built, we haven't built them in yet because they're, they're a standalone and separate TIF district, they're not part of the downtown and such, they're a standalone district.
Okay. All right, if we don't have anything else, and I'm gonna declare us adjourned, and we'll see you all at six.